Are we missing Lynn? I don't see her. And there's Mary, okay. Mike Sparrows. My phone is not working if somebody wants to reach out to Lynn. My phone's in the middle of an update, so I can't do anything right now. Thank you.
Amy Lynn's on now.
Excellent. Okay, we're here. Thank you. Welcome to the Schenandofer Board of Education Regular Meeting, October 8th, 2020. Will the clerk please conduct roll call?
Amy O'Brien.
Here.
Lynn Lockwood.
Here.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Here.
Mary Collins.
Here.
Mike Fabra.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I, Erin McMullin, board clerk, have confirmed with council that this meeting is being held in compliance with Executive Order 202.1, issued by Governor Andrew M. Cuomo on March 12th, 2020. The executive order suspends Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take any action authorized by law without permitting in-public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service. This meeting is being held remotely via Zoom virtual meeting software. The public has the ability to view or listen to this meeting live via the Zoom app, web browser, and/or by telephone. This meeting is being recorded and will be transcribed at a later date.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 4.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the following probationary appointment. Melissa is at New Dell. Date of commencement of service on probation, October 1, 2020. Date of end of probationary service, subject to education law, September 30th, 2024. Certification status, teaching assistant level 3. Salary per Schenandofer CFTA contract. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. 4.2. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the personnel changes as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. 4.3. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to appoint the following as high school club advisors, stipend per CFTA contract. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
I've got a couple of things.
Okay.
First, I don't think we still have numbers on this. Second, I don't understand how we could appoint co-advisors to be named later. I don't think that line should be in there because we would have to go back and you can't appoint somebody ahead of time without having a name. That line, it should just be, you're pointing, for example, it says yearbook Mandy Black and a possible co-advisor. You would have to go back later and do a co-advisor. You can't just name one and have that work without board action. And third, I just don't know if we really want to appoint all these things because of COVID. So those are my three things.
Okay.
So should we table this to discuss?
Well, we could discuss it now. I mean, I just don't, I mean, we got the, I got an email. I assume everyone else got the email from, I think, I think Tim sent it. Did Joe send, Joe, did you send or Tim sent it?
Tim sent it to me and I sent it to you guys.
Okay, where it talked about what, you know, what these groups do and everything. I mean, again, my, speaking for myself, the seniors are going to graduate. Other than that, I don't know what's going to happen this year. I don't know what everybody else thinks. And I don't, I know a lot of their, what they do is fundraising. I don't know what fundraising is going to look like this year. It's
I guess that's a good reason to table it. There's too many unanswered questions. And be able to discuss it after we have all the information.
Yeah, is there a reason we didn't have dollar amounts, like what these stipends actually are?
Chris is still working on that with the union because before COVID, we were doing it different with the contract based on how much work you do. Obviously, when COVID hit in March, that kind of went out the window. So I did send Chris an email. Now he's working on, I believe, we're kind of with the union. And that's why there's not dollar amounts with it tonight.
There is a few on here, though, we probably shouldn't, I mean, vote on. I mean, yeah, we don't have the numbers on them, but there's a couple here that probably should get going on the right, right, I mean, started right now, especially senior class and, you know, National Honor Society, they got to start tracking hours and stuff. So I'm not sure if we vote on a few or we table the whole thing again, but there's definitely a few on here that should get action taken immediately.
Okay. So we, so you're saying we should pull some out right now?
I don't know. Like I said, I think there's definitely a few that should get going now and approved, but you know, maybe that's something we can talk to an executive quick and come back in public and, you know, vote on it. But I think something should be done tonight for a few of these.
I agree, I agree with that.
I just don't know if it would really be, I mean, yeah, I guess we're talking about staff.
I don't think it's executive unless we're talking about specific people. Is there a legal on here? Is, um, phew, who's on?
I mean, here's the thing, the people are right there anyway. But I guess if we're talking about specific clubs, we're talking about specific people. And of course, discussion is what's more important. Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, you could make the argument it's executive. I think Mike's right.
Do you want to table this motion and go into executive?
I think so. What do you guys think?
We're gonna have to. If we're not gonna, if we're not gonna agree on all of them right now, then we need to go into executive and figure this out quick.
Okay, so, and yeah, I'm sure you guys have our, okay, I'll address that in a second. All right, so, um,
You need a motion to table.
4.3, yes, we're gonna, a motion to table it.
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. So I guess a first time for everything and human error with me here. I completely skipped over the whole first half of the agenda because my papers are screwed up. I couldn't find my stapler and I printed everything out and it's all out of order and I just kept on going. So we just said 4.3. We are going to go all the way back to the beginning where we're supposed to be.
Amy, why didn't you finish the section four? That way it's clean.
Okay, I am so sorry, you guys. I am so
I thought I missed something before I got on. I was so confused.
I just thought you were doing it out of order for a reason.
No, it's just
I did too.
My stapler is out of nowhere and everything's out of, yeah. And I'm just robotically going through it. So, okay, we will.
Can we pause for one second, though, because I left my agenda downstairs and none of my family is responding me to bring it to me. I'll be right back.
Okay.
I was just staring at Jamie. You couldn't tell. I didn't know if I had missed something or you guys decided just gonna start on the fours or?
No, it's all me. It's like I'm going through each line item, but it's not registering that I completely skipped over because of the way I have things printed out and not stapled. So, yeah, I apologize.
You could have gotten away with it, Amy, if you was going to say anything.
My, so my phone just finished updating, thank God, because I get a text from Erin. And she's like, you skipped all the reports. Why are you going out of order? I'm like, oh, my gosh. And then I looked at my paper, realized I never, yeah. Anyways, sorry.
I just thought, Amy, that the board came up with a different plan and they were starting with four, so I was going with it.
No, no, it's just me being goofy. So, yes, okay, so Lynn, are you back? She's back. So we are going to continue on through all of four. Actually, no, we're gonna continue. All right, yes, we're gonna just continue on and then we'll go back to the reports again. Okay, 4.4. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to appoint Kathleen Coranta, STEAM Academy Career Technical Education Coordinator with a stipend for the 2020-2021 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion.
You have to, when you go into executive session for the stipends on the extracurricular, you also have to discuss, as you see, there's no amount there as well. So that needs to be discussed in executive.
Okay.
For this one, so how can we approve it if we don't have an amount?
We can't.
Yeah, I would, I would table it, Lynn.
Okay. A motion to table 4.4.
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows.
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. 4.5. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to delegate to the superintendent of schools authority to designate an appropriately qualified medical doctor as school medical inspector for the purpose of preparing a psychological examination pursuant to education law, Section 913, regarding an employee's capacity to perform his or her or her duties. The doctor's report shall be given to the Board of Education in executive session after the examination is complete. Yet further resolved that the superintendent of schools is delegated the authority to coordinate such examination. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows. May I have a second? Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. Correspondence for action. A motion to approve, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve.
Amy, I'm sorry for interrupting you. Did you want to start a new section or go back to the reports now?
I'm gonna go through it and then we'll do the reports and then
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just gonna keep on going because I'm
Keep on going.
I think that's the only way I can keep it straight from here on out. So I apologize again. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.3.
Motion.
Thank you, Sparrows.
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve 6.1 through 6.6. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Sparrows.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. 7.1. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the BOE minutes from the regular board meeting of September 24th, 2020 as attached. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Sparrows. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Aye.
Lynn Lockwood.
Aye.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Aye.
Mike Fabra.
Aye.
Mary Collins.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, thank you very much for your patience. We are going to go back to 201 for this, 2.1 for the superintendent's report.
Amy, you want to do public comment before that?
Oh, my goodness. Yes, I do. Thank you. Yeah, Erin, 1.3.
Public wishing to speak to the Board of Education will be allowed this period of time to do so under the following guidelines. Speakers will be limited to a maximum of three minutes in the entire public comment session to a maximum of 30 minutes. Speakers are requested to raise their hand when they're called on, state their name. And speakers will not be allowed to personally attack any board member, administrator, or any of the public present. Also, no comments by the speakers will be permitted that deal with executive session subjects such as individual personnel matters, discipline issues pertaining to specific individuals, including students. And speakers will not be allowed to read letters. We'll go in order of hands that are raised and we'll try to get through everybody once before we give somebody else a second chance to speak.
Okay, just one moment before we call on the first person. I'm speaking to the board and the superintendent. How are we going to navigate? There's been some questions, concerns about how we navigate this portion of the meeting. Will we be listening only, responding? Will we listen and respond at a future meeting? What is our plan, just so we can all be on the same page? Anybody?
I think like in the past, I think we should listen. If we really have specific answers that we can give immediately, then we should, but seems like most of the questions we usually get are, we listen and then, you know, if we can answer them at a later time, we can do that.
Okay.
Joe, didn't you say there was a legal issue? Isn't that what came up? And I'm sorry, I've been kind of crazed and I've been trying to catch up on emails.
The legal issue is most boards, and it's been recommended by, by legal and Erin, I think you can chime in a little bit too, because I know you just went to a school clerk workshop for a couple of days. It's preferred to take the questions and answer them at a later date just for a simple reason, when people are on the spot, myself, the board, Amy, a couple of mistakes tonight, just, just doing the agenda because your paper is out of order, right? So if I'm asked a question and I, or Sparrows, or Lynn, or Mary, or Amy, anyone on, and answers it, we're kind of on the spot. So we kind of open the district up to liability if we answer incorrectly, or if we're asked a question, we can step back, answer it intelligently through an email or a phone call that we have actually time to think. And I gotta be honest, I answer a lot of questions in open session. Later, I go back and think, wow, if I had time to think about that, I could give a much better answer than I gave in an open session off the top of my head. So that's, again, I won't dodge a question. Erin's recording this. We'll go back, we'll get to questions, we'll get who asked it. We have emails and phone numbers and we'll take care of it. So there's nothing to be dodged. It's just, I think it's more protected for the district and as taxpayers, I don't think the taxpayers want to be liable if something happens at a board meeting and the district ends up getting sued for it. So I personally think it's safer for all involved, including the people asking the questions and our taxpayers.
So even simple and straightforward?
I think if they're real simple, Amy, I think we can answer them. But
Okay.
More detail, that
I think we have to say, no, we're not going to respond to anything.
Okay, okay.
So all or none?
Yeah.
All or none? I just want to make sure we're all on the same page because it's not a point we need
Joe, you're gonna, okay, so Joe, you're gonna answer questions like to people's, because when people speak, we know who it is. So are you gonna answer them after the meeting or will we wait till the next board meeting?
I'll do it the next day.
Okay.
One, one thing is if their questions or comments made in public, you may want to have those answers on the next board meeting.
Agreed.
Everybody can see the answers.
Or could we even just post them right to the webpage?
We could post them right to the agenda.
Okay.
Or we can add it to the end of the minutes. But something so that everybody can see them all.
Yeah, I think adding them to the minutes would be good. These are the questions that were asked. These are the answers that were given.
And
Yeah, even something on the BOE page there with questions from board meeting last night. Here's the answers.
Right.
Does that include COVID questions?
I think every question probably.
Okay, so let's back up one moment. So where is the location going to be? Joe, I'm mostly asking you only because I think you know more, more, most appropriately where it should be.
We can put them right on the minutes in the agenda, if that's okay. Or I can put another link on the board page saying BOE questions, Q and A, and put the BOE date. I can do it. And you know what? Let me put it in both places. Then people won't have to hunt, peck, and find them.
Okay, thank you. And we can have those questions posted, or I'm sorry, answers posted within 24 hours?
I will try Friday.
Okay.
Or the Monday, because Friday after board meeting is always, anyone who knew me knows that Friday after board meeting is my most tactic day of the month because I'm trying to catch up on everything from that board meeting.
Yep.
They wouldn't be in the minutes in the next 24 hours, though.
Okay.
Okay, so let's shoot for the Monday following the board meeting.
Okay, I actually not have a problem doing that at all.
Is that okay?
Does that work?
All right, that sounds good to me.
Okay, I mean, that gives time to
Will that work for you?
It does. It just, usually with the minutes, it takes a few days to go through all of the notes and the motions. So I can't guarantee
I see what you're saying, Erin. No, I absolutely, yeah, no, it can't be with the minutes. It'll have to be its own entity somewhere. Yes, no.
And answers, October 8th, 2020.
Yeah.
And we'll try to get them up tomorrow and Monday at the latest, but hopefully we can get them up tomorrow depending. If I get three questions or if I have three questions, they'll be up tomorrow. If I have 14 questions, then maybe Monday.
Okay.
The amount of questions.
Fair enough.
And then we can, when the minutes are ready, we can add them to the minutes, just so they're kept with
Yeah.
Put them in both places.
It'll be part of the meeting anyway, so the questions I can add into the minutes.
Okay. Good?
Erin, will you just take the questions down as they come in for me?
Yes. Okay. Christine Webb.
Hi, I'm Christine Webb. As she's mentioned, I just, I have a quick question about the psychological exam that the designated as a medical doctor for, medical inspector for the purpose of a psychological. I would love to know in what capacity that a superintendent would require that of his educators, under what reasoning, and who's paying for that psychological as well as if this is a, something that the teachers are required to do based on your designated, designated thought and pursuance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mandy Black.
Hi, thank you again for all that you do, and I appreciate that this is a difficult time. I just wanted to comment on that when you're in executive session discussing the different clubs, please realize that the Yearbook Club has been working. All the senior photos have been turned in and I'm trying to figure out what to do with those. And it is a, something that has to get done quickly and early in order to be able to publish a yearbook in time. Thank you.
That's more a statement than a question, then, correct? There's nothing
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is Andrea Gumbel.
Hi there. I have a statement as well. I'm speaking both as a teacher in the district and as a parent of a senior. I agree, I just, just fuel and maybe insider information from both ends that like Mandy with the yearbook, the senior pictures, the senior advisor has been working. We've already handed out captain gown information. I know the cost of STEAM is not on there and I appreciate, by the way, the board members that responded to me, that meant a lot. So whatever the cost is, our kids don't have internships. We don't have an internship program without STEAM. And so the urgency of getting the kids, the seniors out is imperative. And just with the added extra stress and craziness of teaching this year, that my colleagues that have done amazing work already and really never stopped, I just agree, the urgency is there. And as a senior, a parent of a senior, I know that all, any of those advisorships are things that we should really consider quickly. And as far as, you know, helping out, there's a lot of people helping out. So co-adviserships, I agree with Sparrows completely. Perhaps, you know, there's enough support in our district to help each other, but those people that have been working tirelessly and on top of a hectic schedule, I just urge you to really consider, you know, dealing with that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Andrea, you're, oh, there you go. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, this will conclude public comment. And we will now go on to 2.1, the superintendent report.
Amy, I have one thing, just a presentation on the audit, and I believe that was Mr. Cleveland. And that's all I have.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm the audit manager in charge of overseeing fieldwork and eventually getting the audit report out to you guys in time to meet the state deadlines. So I'm going to touch on a few things about the audit report. We're issuing an unmodified opinion on the school district's financial statements and supplementary information. So that is otherwise known as a clean opinion or the best opinion that you can get. Because the school district, we're also auditing the school districts under government auditing standards and issuing a report on compliance and internal control and other matters. Our report identified one instance of non-compliance related to the New York State Real Property Tax Law 1318 over the 4% limitation. And we identified no material internal control weaknesses. Because the school district expended over $750,000 in federal awards, we are also issuing uniform guidance report. This report identified one instance of non-compliance, which was excess cash resources in the school lunch fund. And we had no material internal control weaknesses to report. We're also issuing communication with those charged with governance at conclusion of the audit with no comments of concern to be reported to the members of the board. Finally, we are issuing an unmodified opinion on the school district's extra classroom activities and have a management comment letter along with that that discusses activities and have a management comment letter along with that, that discusses a few issues related to the COVID shutdown. And that concludes my presentation. If anyone has any questions about the audit or anything.
Also, just in layman terms, we had too much money. We were over our 4% in our, and we knew that because I told the board that was going to happen.
Yep.
Okay, so the board knew we were going over our 4%. So that's not a bad thing.
Nope.
Okay. Secondly, we have too much money in our lunch fund, so we got dinged off on that. That's not a bad thing. And then we had some monies related to COVID, and we got dinged off on that. So overall, the audit was positive.
Yeah, the audit was very positive. We just had to write these up because they are New York State laws and they're not changing them due to the shutdown at all. We have a lot of districts that are over the 4% limitation, just in anticipation of the reductions in state aid that are in discussions.
I just, any questions on that? I mean, basically, we did everything we should do, but we had three audit checks because we carried over too much money in two funds and COVID kicked in and it kind of dinged us. But again, there's still a lot of issues. And again, Evan, I'll speak to it for you, but that's kind of, put it in layman terms a little bit more.
Yes.
In what way was the COVID, how did COVID affect that? Like, what do you mean?
So the shutdown had an effect on the extra classroom activities, which the school district didn't have policies just change overnight, had some issues related to getting student signatures. The school district aren't going to call the students to come in and sign things. And then the shutdown had a, had a caused the general fund budget to be underspent, which was the reason why the school district was over the 4% limit. But overall, very positive audit report and big thank you to Mark and the folks at the CBO.
Any other questions for Evan? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, 2.2, board report. And I added this. This is just one item that has come up over our new normal of hybrid. And it's, I guess, I don't know if policy is the right word or procedure for teacher and caregiver exchange of, you know, communication exchange. An example, I have a child that goes, that attends a hybrid learning center, and if there's any questions, if his caregiver has any questions, she's unable to ask the teacher directly. She has to go through me as the parent. And I wanted to know what options we have to address this, because I'm quite certain I'm not the only parent experiencing this. And also that things are going to come up, I'm sure, as we adjust to this new normal. So what can we do to make this more efficient?
I understand your plight. You're not the only, let me make sure I'm not muted. You're not the only parent that has concern with this elementary through 12th grade, obviously. But the problem is, on behalf of the school, it's a very sensitive issue for us giving information out for other people, students. And there's a line there that if you say, hey, you know what, Mrs. so-and-so or Mr. so-and-so, you can do that. And then we do that and we give out a piece of information that you don't want given out, then you can come back on the district. So I understand, and with the hybrid and the remote and the daycare, I understand. Okay, I'm not saying I don't understand. But I think we put the school in a very precarious situation if we were starting to be allowed to communicate with everybody that, that had something to do with that child during the course of the day. So that's why we have the parental contractor, guardian, and school tool, and then our emergency contacts. But we really, that's emergency contacts, only emergency. So you would literally have to go take this through our legal. They would have.
Didn't we do that? Didn't we discuss this with legal at the last meeting? And they said we could come up with some type of disclosure or something?
It would. Spiros, you're muted.
Ultimately, it'd be some sort of power of attorney. I mean, to cover the school and to cover the parent. I mean, because a parent is basically signing over privacy rights. So I mean.
I'm just talking educationally related, like, for example, hi, Mrs. so-and-so, my password to iReady is not working. Something, you know, simple things.
Right. Spiros is right. There's the FERPA Act freedom of and they now free access to public education for. I hear. Yeah, I know what it stands for. Hold on. And again, I was going back to answering questions off the top of your head and have time to think.
So I'm a very accessible parent, but there's parents that aren't so accessible, and this is a disservice to the kids if, if this doesn't make sense to me. It's not an issue for me. Again, I'm accessible. His provider can contact me, I contact the teacher. But this is already very difficult for parents to begin with, and we're going to just there's got to be a way around it. There has to be a way around it.
It's the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. And what it does, and again, if I get him into thinking, I can give you better answers. What it does, Amy, is it protects every child in the school district, all 1,400 of them, giving out information to people it doesn't belong to. You have to work, no, not you, the district would have to work with our legal to come up with a form. Every parent would sign off waving FERPA, which first of all, I don't know if that's legal or not, because I don't know if you can waive, waive that act. And secondly, if we did that, the burden it would put on the admin team and the teachers would be incredible, because, and I'm looking at Mike and Mary, two former, well, a current and a former teacher. But every time you talk to someone on the phone, know what you could tell that person based on what you had in your book to tell that person. Is that answered? Was that too convoluted? You've got 20 kids you're responsible for. Now, each kid has eight different contacts. It would make it a living nightmare, I believe, on our staff if we had to do that. I just, and again, I'm looking at Mary and Mike the most because you're both elementary teachers. You know, you know who to call, you know who to email, you know who to talk to.
Okay, so can the child, because there's a lot of communication back and forth with the teacher and the child through the iPads and the various technology, can the child say, you know, I need this?
Anything, as a parent, Amy, want to give up? If you want to go for your password.
I'm saying if my son, if my kid is on one of those programs, whatever that is, where it's regular submission of information to the teacher, can the child say, I can't find my iReady password. Can you help me with my iReady password? Can the child do that?
It is. I, that's kind of a loaded question, because is the caregiver standing off to the side of the computer listening? I mean, again, when our teachers are teaching, I'm under the impression our teachers are believing, and Mike, help me, because I know you're an SV, but is it your anticipation that the parents are in the classroom with the kids when you're teaching?
No, when I have my remote kid, it's just him on there and, you know, the parents aren't there. And the answer to your question, I mean, my one remote kid at home, when he has, he had an issue the other day trying to get a Movimax, and I just, he just sent me an email, or I think it was something on Seesaw, and I just emailed him back, like, here's your password.
Okay, that's basic, that, thank you, Mike. That's all I'm asking, is can the child initiate? You know, these kids, even the little ones are tech savvy. Okay, so the kid can reach out to the teacher. Okay. That's all.
You're muted, Amy.
Does any other board member have anything? Okay. All right. Is there anything else I have missed before we go into executive? No. Okay. All right. 8.1. Upon recommendation of the Board of Education, a motion for consideration of executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law and the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Discussions involving a proposed pending or current litigation and contract negotiations. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mike. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
I'm sorry. Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi. Motion passed.
Amy, you will be coming back out on the steam and the slide, that's right. So just notice that we're coming back out.
Yeah, we will be taking action. Yes.
Okay.
And we forgot to, we, me, motion to reconvene and open, so we're just going to do the logistical part of that now.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay. 8.3, it resolved that Coughlin and Gerhart is appointed as defense counsel for the district in the matter of Jane Doe versus Schenango Fork Central School District and Central Baptist Church. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Spiros. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
You're muted, Mary.
You're muted, Mary.
Hi.
Motion passed. 4.3, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the following as high school club advisors. National Honor Society, Sam Alger, $902. Senior class, Dan Palmer, $2,476. High school yearbook, Mandy Black, $5,216. Middle school yearbook advisor, Marcus Zapia, and co-advisor Kathy Knapp, $1,243. Co-advisors may be added later with approval, but there will be no additional funds provided. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Motion passed. 4.35, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the following as high school club advisors. Student council, junior class, sophomore class, freshman class, band director, chorus director. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Spiros. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion. And roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
No.
Lynn Lockwood.
No.
Spiros Tomatoes.
No.
Mike Fabra.
No.
Mary Collins.
No.
Motion did not pass. No, we've denied these clubs tonight, but we are open to revising in a few months should circumstances change. 9.1, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, Mary. May I have a second?
Can we do the steam?
Oh, geez, I'm sorry. Again, me. This is me, nobody else.
All right.
I'm all out of order.
That.
Yes, I apologize.
Good catch there. Good catch.
Thank you, Lynn. 4.4, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to appoint Kathleen Coranta, STEAM Academy Career Technical Education Coordinator, with a stipend in the amount of $2,575 for the 2020-2021 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Spiros.
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Lynn Lockwood.
Hi.
Spiros Tomatoes.
Hi.
Mike Fabra.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi. Motion passed. Thank you, Lynn. 9.1, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.